We're just a couple of minutes away from starting the meeting. Before we begin, I'd invite you to stand and join me in the pledge and then Amelia Williams will bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, I pray for the protection of all the peoples from now on, for those suffering from COVID-19, especially my brother-in-law who's been in the hospital 465 days in competition to the virus. I pray for those suffering and give thanks for the beauty you've given us every moment together. I pray, Lord, that our community works together for common good and that you help this council seek wisdom as we make decisions on behalf of our residents. Lord, help this city to continue to prosper and provide an abundance of services and opportunities to all our residents. In your name we pray.
Amen. Amelia? All right, we do have large print versions of the agenda over here. If that's helpful to anyone, feel free to get one. So I'll now call the meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Springdale City Council, Tuesday, June 22, 2021. And I'll start off by asking our city clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Sprouse.
Here.
Brian Powell.
Here.
Amelia Williams.
Here.
Jeff Watson.
Here.
Mike Overton.
Here.
Mike Lawson.
Here.
Kevin Flores.
Here.
Randall Harriman.
Here.
Mark Fugierus.
Ernest Kate.
Here.
All right, thank you. I'm going to start off with a recognition, if she's here.
Back in the corner.
Rose here. There she is. Don't hide from me, Rose. I got all kinds of stuff up here. Just meet me up at that microphone, Rose. How long has it been since you've been to a city council meeting?
Oh, golly.
Long time. Well, you helped when Denise.
I did.
Yeah, you would sit in for Denise when she was out.
He's coming back to help me whenever I'm on vacation tonight.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Well, Rose, for those that don't know, I think everyone in here knows, that after 32 years, you're retiring.
Retiring.
Retiring. And we are happy for you. We're sad for us, but we're happy for you. And I've got a couple of things. I read this at the event, but we've got the actual official hard copy now. So I would like to read this. This is a letter from Governor Hutchinson. Dear Rose, I want to extend my personal recognition of your outstanding contribution to the state of Arkansas upon your retirement from the Springdale mayor's office. Your diligence ensures that the mission of the city of Springdale government is fulfilled, and I am grateful for the municipal employees like yourself who are committed to serving others with compassion and efficiency. For 32 years, you've dedicated your time and energy to your work, and I appreciate the leadership and dedication you provide daily. The people of Arkansas and Springdale truly benefit from your service. I wish you well as your career comes to a close, and I note your success with my sincere congratulations. As governor, I want to personally thank you for serving Arkansas for 32 years. Congratulations on your retirement. Sincerely, Asa Hutchinson, Governor of Arkansas. Thank you. Thank you. Of course, I read the governor's first, and then comes the important one. This is the proclamation from the office of the mayor. Whereas Rose Lawrence has served the city of Springdale since 1989, the first with Judge Ludwig's court, and finally in the mayor's office, serving with three mayors, Mayor Charles McKinney, Mayor Jerry Van Hooch, and Mayor Doug Sprouse. And whereas Rose has been a mentor to many of her fellow employees with guidance, counsel, encouragement, sharing her talents and knowledge, and whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, Rose made and provided hundreds of masks to her fellow employees and community using her personal time, talent, and materials. And whereas in addition to her administrative assistant title, Rose has simultaneously held the titles of mother, grandmother, great-grandmother, sister, and daughter. But to us, you will always be our beloved friend. And whereas the city of Springdale is grateful to our Rose for her service to the city and our citizens for 32 years, and we wish her the very best in her retirement. Now, therefore, I urge the citizens of Springdale to recognize this day, June 22, 2021, as Rose Lawrence Day in the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and call upon all the citizens of Springdale to join together to honor and observe this day. Yep. I've got one other thing to do, but I just want to say, just take a personal privilege, and you all have many stories and things you can say, I'm sure, about Rose. But I can tell you, just to be very serious, when I became mayor 12 and 1/2 years ago, I don't know what I would have done had Rose not been here to help me get started. And she's been a help ever since. And we're going to miss her. I'm going to miss her. Our staff's going to miss her. I know you as a council also are going to miss her. And we really do wish her the best. And with that, you know what this is. She's had to, she's, yeah, she's gotten these all the time for everybody else that retires. And she's, now she's going to finally get one. We have a local artist, Ron Minett, who makes these. He's a glass artist. And this is a nice little deal here. Rose Lawrence, City of Springdale, 1989 to 2021.
Yay.
So there you go.
Thank you.
And why don't you, surely you want to say something? Sure, I'll put this back in the bag.
Okay. Denise knows how well I like to talk.
God, I get it.
Okay, so I called and talked to him, and all they said was the office was too quiet. I'm not sure how I'm supposed to take that. I have been so fortunate to have worked for the city of Springdale for as long as I have with some remarkable people. I have so many friends and now family, the mayors. I can't tell any of you how much each one of you have meant to me over the years. And even as hard as it is dealing with council, I love each one of you. No, I'm just kidding. But I want to thank each one of you for helping me grow and just as a person. And there's just, there's nothing I can say to tell you how much I appreciate each one of you. Thank you.
And while I'm, before we go to the next agenda item, I want to introduce Anna McKinney. Anna, will you please stand up? Anna has been working with us now for several months, helping us with grants, helping with other things, and she has been training with Rose for the last several weeks. And she is ready, and she and, she's going to join Beth in our office. And we welcome Anna and look forward, I know you wanted to be able to put a face with the name and a voice. So Anna will be my executive assistant, and she and Beth are going to help keep things going here. So welcome, Anna. Thank you, Beth, also, for all you do. And we'll soldier on, all right? Thank you. We're at item five on the agenda. This is the portion of each meeting that the council sets aside to hear comments from our citizens. Council will hear brief comments from citizens present at the meeting tonight. And if there is anyone that would like to speak to the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda, you're welcome to come to the microphone at this time.
Just wanted to tell you all, I found out today that Friday at 9:30, there is going to be a parade of cars and motorcycles from the Springdale Senior Center over to Harry Joyner's house and around. We're doing a happy birthday. He is a WWII veteran. He's 97, and he's a big participant at the senior center, but his health has prevented him from being there lately. So they're going to surprise him with a car parade and motorcycles and balloons. It's going to be awesome. If you have any questions, talk to the senior center, Lori.
That's great. Senior, but they're starting at the senior center?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
9:30. We're going to, what do you call it? Park and roll.
Park and roll.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Janie. Okay, anyone else? All right, we'll move on to item six, approval of the minutes. Council, if there are no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
Move for approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion of second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Item seven, procedural motions. What's your pleasure?
Move for A and B.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second for A and B. Roll call, please.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes.
7-0.
All right, thank you. Item eight, I'm going to ask the group, the Springdale Veterans Memorial Organization to, you're going to start for us. On up, Colby and I had the pleasure of meeting and getting an update last week, and I think, I think we were very impressed, and I think you'll be excited about what you hear. So it's all yours.
Mr. Mayor, Honorable members of the council, thank you for your time tonight. We have just a few slides with the simple purpose of providing you with an update of the continuing efforts for the Springdale Veterans Memorial Organization. Specifically, just a quick review of the past actions, look at our winning design and the actions we've taken this past year to further develop that design into a final conceptual plan. And finally, a review of our proposed path forward. As a quick review, it was about two years ago that we first introduced ourselves to the council and provided you with our proposed plan to establish a veterans memorial here in Springdale. You graciously gave us your support for this proposal and approved us to proceed with our national level design competition using the proposed sighting of this memorial at J.B. Hunt Park. We held an event back in October of 2019 to kick off our solicitation phase, and by the deadline of 1 January 2020, we had 36 designers express their intent to provide us with their designs. Then COVID happened. We had to extend our deadline a little bit, but our jury spent the entire month of May last year reviewing and scoring all the submissions, narrowing the results to our final top three designs. And it was around this time last year that we presented those winning designs to the council and obtained approval to proceed in coordinating with the city planners to flesh out the details of that winning entry and finalize a conceptual design. And we're here today to present the results of that effort and seek your thoughts and further approval to proceed with the major fundraising effort now needed to construct this memorial for our Springdale community. You'll recall that the highlighted area seen in this view depicts the location of our proposed veterans memorial on the far eastern edge of J.B. Hunt Park. This is a mostly vacant five-acre parcel of land bordered by the Pump House Road to the east and Fleming Drive to the north. Our goal with this project, again, is to establish a prominent artistic veterans memorial in a befitting setting that will further enhance the appearance of J.B. Hunt Park, its attraction, its draw, its function, and its utility for a community on a year-around You'll recall our winning design was submitted by Connor O'Shea of Hinterland's Urbanism and Landscape. Mr. O'Shea is a landscape architect and assistant professor at the University of Illinois, as well as the founder and director of Landscape Strategies Laboratory. This design provided for major improvements in landscape covering the entire five acres. Alternating rows of labrali pines and ginco make up the Stars and Stripes Grove to the north of Memorial Plaza and the wall. During the fall, we'll see the ginco leaves turn bright yellow and fall off suddenly, creating a striping effect with contrasting tall, narrow, evergreen pines. Groves of oak, beech, magnolia, maple, gum, and tulip trees will surround the Southern Trailway and the Great Lawn, representing each of the services. Memorial wall and the plaza occupy the center of the site and are cupped by densely planted tree groves, masses of spring balm, and flowering perennials. The back of the wall will feature etched historical murals, providing an educational aspect to all the visitors, while the front of the wall will have narrow granite shelves, allowing visitors to leave small mementos like flowers and memory or tributes. Gently mounting landforms encircle the park, buffering noise and light from the surrounding community, and providing a stunning visual backdrop. The one-acre Great Lawn is a flexible space for a range of activities, including picnicking or watching events on the plaza. Its gentle upward slope of nearly four feet helps provide views down towards the plaza. In the Honor Grove, bronze sponsor plaques will be nestled among cinnamon ferns and white tulips, all beneath cathedral-like branching of a grid of 28 American elms. Now, since our last presentation with the council, we've been blessed with an outpouring of technical support from our Springdale community, and we wish to express our sincere gratitude to all these businesses and their staff. We spent a great deal of time with Chad Wolf and his parks team, reviewing details of the proposed design and fleshing out various concerns on maintenance and finishes and potential risks. Chad networked us with Bob Kelly and Dusty Graham of Core Architects, who volunteered their architectural services to support this effort. They teamed with Engineering Services Incorporated to perform a complete survey and mapping of the proposed site at J.B. Hunt Park. Dusty, Jason Bowes, and Colton Malloy worked closely with Connor O'Shea to develop a full set of working conceptual drawings. They shared these drawings with Milestone Construction Company, Scott Jones, and Mike Davis, who then completed a schematic design cost estimate for us. From this initial effort, the entire team conducted an iterative analysis of value engineering to make numerous revisions to the design that would refine both the intent of the design as well as the overall cost of the project. Once this effort was completed, the team reached out to the Fay Jones School of Architecture and coordinated with Dean Peter McKee and Justin Tucker to build the three-dimensional model you see before you today. This project was used as a teaching aid this past spring semester, and students within the Fay Jones Design Studio analyzed the best way to represent the layout of this memorial and handmade the 530 trees surrounding the space. Again, I'd like to thank each of these individuals and organizations for their tremendous support this past year, and especially Core Architects for providing the funding to support the construction of this model. With the model, you can now see the vision of this memorial. The final design removes the ribbon of water reflection pool and replaces it with a seat wall ribbon of architectural concrete and decomposed granite pathways that will encircle the one-acre Great Lawn, providing restive areas to sit overlooking the lawn, the plaza and wall, or any of the various groves of trees representing each of the services. The reflection pool will be replaced with a meadow of mixed grasses, bulbs, and herbaceous perennials. Much of the original plan for expensive granite finishes has been replaced with architectural concrete. The bridge over the reflection pool is no longer needed for the processional path through the meadow, and the granite wall itself will be composed of concrete with granite veneer. These revisions, while addressing concerns for overall cost and future maintenance, were discussed with and worked out by Connor O'Shea himself, ensuring his design intent and conceptual plan remain fully intact. The details of this final conceptual plan were provided to Milestone Construction, who has provided us with a final estimated cost. The construction cost of this five-acre memorial is estimated to be $4.4 million. The inclusion of a 15% contingency, building permits, insurance, and other fees brings a total, all-in cost, to $5.8 million. Along with our model, our technical team put together a short video clip or virtual fly-through to further illustrate the vision for this memorial. See if we can get some help from upstairs to make this work. Now that we have the design, the tools to show that vision, and the costs to achieve that vision, we're ready to begin our push for a major fundraising campaign. We're proposing a three-pronged approach over this next year to meet our goal. First, we're soliciting your support in approaching a potential major donor or multiple donors that would be interested in covering a large portion of the cost of this major community improvement at J.B. Hunt Park. Similarly, we will be soliciting support from local businesses to provide cash donations, material donations, labor, or other in-kind service donations to support this community project. Finally, we'll be soliciting the support of our entire community for cash or online donations at a multitude of events over the next year, including bikes, blues, and barbecue, ball games, golf tournaments, and many other local events. We're working with a vendor to set up a custom brick engraving fundraiser that will allow individuals, families, and sponsors to also order engraved bricks for installation within the processional or reflection paths of this memorial, as well as the bronze markers mentioned earlier throughout our tree groves. The brick and marker fundraiser will continue on into the future, supported by SVMO as a revenue generator to continually update and support future memorial improvements, as well as to provide parks and rec operations and maintenance costs. To get our vision and message out, we'll be reaching out to media to display our model, show our video, sell bricks, gather in-kind support, and generate interest and community support to reach that funding goal. As a quick summary slide, our first purpose today was simply to update the council on our progress and our path forward from here in continuing our mission to establish a veterans memorial. With your approval, we'll initiate our action plan to reach out to the community and conduct a major fundraising and in-kind support campaign. We'll return next year or sooner, depending on the level of our success in raising the needed funds, and again, seek your further approval and support to proceed with planning of celebratory events for both groundbreaking and ribbon-cutting ceremonies. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank you and the council for your continued support for this community project and your time and consideration tonight. Our team stands ready to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Great presentation. Again, we're, I was, I was really excited. You know, you have a lot of ideas for projects that come to you. I mentioned this to you in the meeting. And all well-intentioned, but I think many times people or organizations get into those and realize there's much more to that than they thought. This organization has gone in with your eyes wide open. You've done great work thus far, and it gives me real confidence that you're going to, you're going to get it done. So, so any other, any questions from the council? All right. Good deal. Thank you. Thank you all for being here. How many, stand up if you're part of the organization. Good deal. Thank you all for your work. Are you going to take the model with you or leave it here?
If I could, sir, leave it here for a little while.
Sure, leave it here for a while, and we just want to get it out, as I mentioned, before the wrecking ball hits this building. Okay. All right. Thanks. All right. Item nine, I'm going to turn over to, I guess, to Ernest on this appeal.
This is an appeal of a denial of a conditional use application. Page four is the letter from the person who's appealing. The verbatim minutes from the planning commission meeting of June 1st are on page five. Pages five and six of your packet, as well as page seven, where they've stated their new days and hours of church service. Ms. Christie may want to talk about the issues that came up at planning commission. This would be a conditional use in a C2 zone, I believe.
Do you guys want to present your case?
Let me just address the concerns that the planning commission had at this location. Let me see if I can move my. This is for a church as a use unit 42, as a church synagogue to be located at 1800 South Pleasant Street. This is a small tract that has two commercial buildings on it. It has 52 parking spaces, and I put this in here so you can kind of see. The concern the planning commission had was that based on the farm marshal's recommendation for maximum occupancy of 146 people, they would require to have 42 spaces. There are only 52 spaces on this entire site. At this site, there are also seven other businesses, which are open at various times when they propose. Their hours of operation they presented to the planning commission would be a Sunday school at 11:00 on Sundays and a Sunday service at noon, a Tuesday service at 7:00 PM, a Friday service at 7:00 PM, a Saturday service and community on 8:00 AM on Saturdays. They had letters from some of the businesses indicating they had some spaces that would be available part of that time, but not all of that time. And our concern was this site just does not have adequate parking to accommodate a church at that location.
Is it the one with the dark parking lot right there?
Yes. And there's numbers on there, you just can't see them, and there's 52 spaces. So.
Ladies, y'all can come and address your.
Hello, my name is Maria, and I am actually representing the Church Iglesia de Dios, which is, yes, located at, we chose this location here for our services. We did wanted to appeal on this, and we sent over a letter. I don't know if y'all have the copy of the letter.
Yes.
But pretty much, we just kind of want to make it so that y'all can be aware that we did change our services so that it won't be a conflict for the other businesses around. We do, we do know they're hours of business, so ours is going to be pretty much in the evening. The only one would be Sunday during the day, and there's only one business that's open during our hours, if anything. So I understand we have 42 parking spots that we have to have, but the thing is, we are not a big, we're not starting. We don't have a lot of members. And so either way, the days that we chose, which would be Friday and Sunday, it shouldn't be a conflict, we thought, because no matter what, we're going to have 48 spaces, because one of the businesses wanted four. So pretty much, there's 52, and we just subtracted the four spaces to respect them, and it still gave us 48 spaces. And then we also were able to talk to the First National Bank on the side, and they gave us a letter, and I have it with me. They just haven't signed it. We were able to sign it yesterday. They haven't signed it and given it back to us, the copy on their end, but it's just pretty much stating that they're giving us 10 spaces on the side to be able to use, if anything, if that's going to be a help for us in some kind of way.
So just to be clear, the, Patsy, in the original request, she, she named off a Saturday morning time? That's not still part of your plan?
No, we just, we just downed for Friday and Sunday for, you know.
Okay.
For the, for the parking spaces, pretty much. But I mean, if we can add another day in there, that would be great, but we just picked those two days. And I don't know if that bank is a help also, just so that, you know, you can know that we have 10 extra spaces on their end.
Okay. Okay.
So, what happens if a business in this plaza is replaced by a new business who is wanting more spaces than the four, let's say, that the business that was currently there wanted? Then, I don't know, what is the process, Patsy? So, then what? Then do they lose?
Those signed parking agreements are filed as lanes on the property, so they are limiting themselves to nothing else can go in there that would use more spaces than what we're committing to here. And I have not seen the letter from the bank. If you don't have it signed by the bank yet?
No, I haven't.
Okay. Until we actually see a signed letter from the bank, we can't consider that that's available. But it also means that once this -- if you approve this conditional use, then those operations that are there is all that can stay. Because we're setting the limit of what can happen at this location. And that's something we talk about real serious, and we've had several places where parking becomes an issue when businesses change out.
So, the owner could not rent to other businesses needing more spaces?
Needing more parking spaces.
Needing more parking spaces.
Right, right.
Well, that's a -- That's a direct cost to the property owner that the city is putting on him, that he has no control over, based on the economy, and --
He's agreeing to that by allowing this conditional use to be, you know, he signed the conditional use saying that they would allow that to go on. But that's the ramifications of it.
And he's clear on that?
I assume so. We had that discussion. I can't tell you that that's, you know.
So, just one property owner involved?
I believe so. It's just that, of course, the bank is a separate property owner, but yes.
How do we go about enforcing the Sunday services and the Fridays only? What do we do in the -- like, let's say, they break this agreement on a Saturday? What do we -- how do we enforce that?
If they violate whatever the terms, if they're given a conditional use and those terms are spelled out, if they violate the terms of the conditional use, they can be brought back for a hearing in front of the planning commission as to whether the conditional use should be revoked.
And normally, that happens if we have complaints. It's like, we're not gonna have somebody out there that's there every day, every Sunday, or every Saturday to check it.
I had a question. It has the beginning times, 11:00 and 12:00 on Sunday, or 12:00 on Sunday and 7:00 p.m. on Friday, but it doesn't have an ending time?
No, didn't.
They would be subject to all the noise ordinance?
That's correct.
That would be in any -- in a commercial zone?
And I didn't bring a resolution. Normally, this would come back to the next meeting, and we would set all those additional conditions. If you all overturn the planning commission's decision, we'd have to put the resolution together, so. And I need to remind you, not that I'm picking on this church or any others, we have had some real concerns with churches going into these kinda buildings that weren't designed for churches to start with. And usually, it's the parking situation, because that was never designed or built for that kind of a parking demand. And also, we have the noise complaints. Now, fortunately, this one is in a commercial area. There's not any residential right adjacent to it, which is not what we've had in some situations.
So, the fire marshal said that it's 146 max occupancy for this?
Yes. He has to make the determination based on what would be the maximum occupancy of the structure. And once we get that, it's four parking spaces per -- I mean, one parking spaces for each four occupants. And, you know, a lot of times, we hear from them, they don't have that many people attending, but we can't base it on what they're telling us as their membership or their numbers right now. We have to base it on what the occupancy is. And we changed that real quiet some time ago so that we had some basis to determine how many parking spaces were needed.
Because churches would wanna grow.
We assume so. That's usually the case, yes. They wanna grow. Right.
So, this says there's only 52 spaces on the entire site. That's the three buildings put together?
Correct. As you can see on the drawing, it's parking spaces that are right up to the building on both sides, on both buildings, and a few in the front. And that's all the spaces that are on that site.
That's not including the bank?
Not including the bank, correct. Right.
What about the building next door? Any on the other side, on the -- be on the north side?
On the north side. I looked at it real quickly. They don't have any spaces to give up either. And they have operations that are open. There's a little restaurant in there.
That's actually retail in there.
Yeah, and it takes up most of the parking spaces that are there.
Did they weigh in on this one way or the other?
No.
Okay. So, we -- did I just hear that we did not have any kind of opinion from all of the businesses in that area?
You have to remember, they're required to notify the property owner. That doesn't mean necessarily that each of the individual businesses may be told directly. We're assuming the owner of the property would tell them. But there's not a requirement that they have to notify the individual businesses that's in the area, just the property owners.
Have y'all considered Sunday-only services?
She says, this is our pastor. She said if Sunday is what y'all agree, just for us to have services, then we'll take it. We'll go ahead and just use the Sundays. This is, just to kinda like, let you know, we have a lease with them right now. We have to pay, 'cause we had to get in there and start, you know, bringing it up to at least so that we can congregate. But it's gonna be a three-year term. So, our plan, yes, our plan is to grow. And this is just so that we don't have to be in a house or something, and we can just kinda start and get back up so that we can plan on buying ourselves a building, you know? The, I mean, I sent out, I kinda sent out letters for actually the small businesses too. Nobody really came or, you know, said anything about it. You know, but this is just so that we can at least start up, and we wanna respect everybody from the businesses there. That's why we kinda went in person and talked to them. Because from my understanding, this is an open parking spot, no matter what, from the owner. And so, the time that we did a lease with them, they were in the exchange of selling it. So, it just kinda impacted us in a way. But then, they said, "You can still go ahead, and let's see how it goes and what the city says." So, we just went forward, and now we're here, so.
Well, whatever action is taken, or if none's taken, you know, I want you to know that we value our faith community and our churches. I just --
Yeah.
There are a lot of issues that can crop up. And I'm not sure, I mean, you've said you'd be willing to go to just Sunday services, and I know you don't wanna do that. And I'm not sure that would get you there anyway. But that's a big, that's a big change when you're making a three-year commitment, and you're putting money into the space. And are you sure this would be, even if we could get it approved, are you sure this is the best thing for your church?
I'm gonna translate with her.
Okay.
Okay, so she's saying that we have put money into this location, but we can still try to have services at a home if we need to. But she's saying that we put money into this location, and if we need to, we can have a service at a house, if, you know, throughout the week or something.
Would your lease be -- can you get out of your lease if this isn't approved?
Yeah, I did talk to, I talked to one of the agents, and he said, "Just let us know, and it's not gonna hurt us." But I just don't know how, like, yeah. I mean, I would just have to talk to him, but he told me to update him.
Did you say that there was an ownership change?
They know, yeah.
Okay, so when did that take place?
It was just in, it was April. It was April, in April, they had the ownership change. And that's when --
Desde abril?
From April 1st, that's when we started paying the rent. And then, that's the same day that they told us, "Oh, we have ownership change." And he was aware of that, too, the new owner.
I'm paying for the warrant, I'm paying for the --
Yeah, we got everything connected and everything, you know. And we're actually done as far as updating with the, bringing it up inside, you know, for us to have the other bathroom. And the marshals went in there, and they did the inspection on everything, so. She says, she is missionary, and she comes from Texas. She says she's never had this problem before anywhere else, and it's given a struggle for her, she say.
At the risk of starting an argument between our two attorneys, if we, I wanna be sure, because y'all have talked about this before, and I don't remember how we ended up. But if the council decides to take no, or to uphold the decision of the planning commission, do we ask for a motion to deny the appeal? Or do we just not make a motion to?
Well, I know what Ernest is gonna say.
I do, too.
I like to have a clean record. I will defer to what the council would like to do.
We don't take any action. We don't take any action.
So, it's to the council, unless y'all can, we can certainly ask more questions. Do y'all have anything else to add?
Esto lo que le dije. She's just stating that she hopes y'all can take into consideration for us, just to start. And then, and then, once, like I mentioned, once we get out of the lease, or maybe we can talk to the owners to change it up to where it's a later, you know, a lesser lease agreement, maybe? We could probably talk to him. But once the lease is done, either way, that we are planning to buy our own location.
Patsy, if, how do we amend a conditional use? What kinda process would that take if this were to be approved?
I guess you could send it back to the planning commission for them to review it with updates of what they're asking to do now. That would be the easiest way to do it, because they didn't hear any of those conditions. If it is denied, they can apply for a year at that same location. Doesn't mean they can't go someplace else. The property is owned by a property management company, and it appears they've had it for a little while. I don't know beyond that. I don't either.
Okay. Well, council, it's to you. Go ahead.
Well, so, with your first point being made, Ms. Perez, how sure are you that you can get out of this lease if this is?
The owner did know what we were going through, so he did say, "Just let me know, and keep me updated with the city," 'cause he knew we have to go through this process. And so, just to let him know what the city says. If anything, if it comes down to a no, he said, "Then we can get you out of your lease."
I feel the best thing to do is to take no action on this today. But like, she just said, if you'll take your new information and take it back through the planning commission, that doesn't require a motion, correct?
If you don't take any action, the appeal's not?
It's denied, yeah.
Yeah.
So, and they won't be able to go back to planning commission for a year?
Right.
Right.
If you don't overturn the planning commission's decision, then it is denied for a year. If you want to, and Ernest will have to say whether you can table the action, I think we need to have a time to talk to the owner as well.
I agree.
So that he understands the ramifications of what we're talking about, too. I have not talked to him directly, so I don't know if he understands that he's setting himself up for what the rest of the property can be used for as long as this is going on either. Cannot be used. What it can be used for is what's there, but that's --
He needs to be aware of what he cannot do with his own property.
I understand.
So, if we table it, then that gives them an opportunity to work a little bit more?
For us to work with staff and see what we can come up with. And then, we would not take it back to planning commission. We would bring it back to you guys after we've had a chance to talk to the owner and see what kind of changes that can, if anything, could be made. That would be my suggestion, if Ernest, that's okay with you?
The next city council meeting is, don't we have an extra week?
July 13th.
July 13th?
Whatever, yeah.
So, we've got three weeks. Would that be time enough to find out whatever we can find out?
I would assume you need to have the property owner contact me so we can meet together and talk about it, okay? We can do that?
Is someone, we'd entertain that motion, or whatever motion you want?
Or if you take no action, then it's denied.
Right. Or you can take no action, and it's denied.
I move to table.
Until the next council meeting?
Until the next council meeting.
Ms. Perez, do you have any questions you need to ask to clarify this? Because, again, the 13th of July is gonna be, you have to come back.
Okay, well, she just, Mirta just said, you know, I don't, I know this is actually my first time, like, doing all of this, so it's all new to me, but I'm learning. You know, we wanna do the things right. So, we did, you know, we put the money into the location, and she's saying, you know, if you just give us the chance, you know, we can, we're gonna follow through until we can, you know, get up and get our own location.
And I think tabling it, though, that protects you guys when we can get clear answers from the owner and see the documents from the bank. And it also protects the owner of the building. So, I think once we have all our i's dotted and our t's crossed, I think that we could definitely make a decision from there.
It also means they can't have services there.
Until then.
Until it's done, so you can't start.
Yeah, no, we have.
If the council votes to table it, which is the motion before us right now, then basically, it'll give you about three weeks to work with the owner, make sure the owner can work with planning, and see if there are changes that can be made in what you're asking that might get this to a place that it works for everyone. But that may or may not happen. But three weeks would at least give you a little more time to try and make that work, if you wanna do that.
So, if we go ahead and, okay, if we do this, the table, though, I guess, that, pretty much, it's gonna, at the end, we'll have like, a yes or no. So, right now, it's just gathering up more information, and then, at the end of that meeting?
Then we do the same thing we're doing tonight, but maybe your ask will be a little different. Or, you know, we don't know. But
Okay.
That, I mean, we're gonna deal with the motion one way or the other tonight, now that we've got a motion and a second. So, we're gonna deal with the tabling either way. Okay, before we vote, I'm gonna, we just noticed Councilman Fuggerus joined us. Mark, can you hear us there, okay?
Yes.
Do you have any questions before we vote on the motion to table? Do you have any questions before we vote on the motion to table?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, if there are no other comments or questions, uh, we'll call for the vote on the motion.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
No.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Carry seven, one, table two, July 13th.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Feel, feel free to, of course, our planning department, I think Patsy will be the contact at our planning department and she can, uh, she can help you, uh, hopefully, you know, we'll see if we can get where we need to go.
Yes, sir, thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, we're at item 10. Uh, I'll go ahead and read it, a resolution approving the reappointment of Derek Gibson to the Board of Commissioners of the Housing Authority of the City of Springdale. I had a call from Derek this afternoon late and he had, he asked, he had a conflict and asked if, if I felt like he needed to be there. I told him I, I, I didn't think so, but, so I'm the reason he's not here. So, anyway, I have read the, uh, resolution. Eric, Derek's done a great job on our, uh, Housing Authority Board, uh, Commission and I hope.
Move the resolution be passed on the first.
Got a motion and a second? Thank you for bailing me out of that sentence that didn't have an end. Uh, all right, Denise?
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores? Um, who's not here? Harriman?
Yes.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carry seven, seven zero.
All right, thank you. All right, we're at item 11, Planning Commission reporting recommendations by Patsy Christie, Director of Planning and Community Development.
Okay, the first item is a rezoning request for a nine acre tract that's located on, uh, Hilton Road on the south end, on the west side. It's approximately 1,200 feet south of Butterfly Avenue. They're attempting to rezon the property from Agricultural District A1 to SF2, which is low, medium density, single family. Planning Commission reviewed this request and recommends approval. The title of the ordinance reads in ordinance submitting ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from Agricultural District A1 to low, medium density, single family residential district SF2 and declaring an emergency. And you can see from those, the property all rounded is on SF2. Property across the street is part of a PUD.
Move the ordinance be adopted?
Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the room? Okay, Denise?
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugierus?
Yes, ma'am.
Al?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Has emergency clause?
As, as usual, there are pending actions on these. That's why each one of these have, has an emergency clause.
With emergency clause, bid up?
Second.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
The next item is a 2.72 acre tract located at 1710 South Powell Street. The request of this rezoning is to rezon the property from Commercial District C2 to Light Industrial District I1. Planning Commission recommends approval of this rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads in ordinance submitting ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from General Commercial District C2 to Light Industrial District I1 and declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance be adopted?
Second.
Okay, thank you. We've got a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? From anyone in the room?
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
With emergency clause, bid up?
Second.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
The next item is a request to rezon 15.12 acres located on East Robinson, east of Apple Blossom, north of Robinson Avenue. Uh, it is request to rezon it from Medium Density Multi Family Residential District MF12 to Planning Unit Development, PUD. Planning Commission recommends approval. Um, I need to go over the details of the development plan for this, uh, project. As I said, it's a 15.12 acre tract, uh, which includes the entirety of the property. The commercial that's to the front is not being included in this PUD. It will be, uh, started immediately after the PUD's approval and do one complete phase of construction. It will be called the Barberry Court Planning Unit Development. It is to be built with 87 residential plots, all single family homes. The developer intends to build and sell homes on the lots and/or sell the lots. The lots will be similar to conventional subdivision lots with a front loading garage accessing a public street in front of the home and a private backyard behind the house. The typical size of the lot is a 40 foot wide by 110 to 140 foot deep lot. The permitted uses in this PUD will be use unit one, which is citywide public uses by right, use unit four, cultural recreational and health facilities, use unit eight, single family dwellings, and use unit 34, which is model home temporary marketing, uh, model home, not mobile home, sorry. Model home, temporary marketing office, there's a difference. Um, as I said, 87 lots on 15.12 acres equals 5.7 lots per acre. And they are including a green space of 2.4 acres, which is 15, uh, which is 15.9%. The minimum required in the PUD is 15%. As I said, the lot sizes will be 40 foot wide by 110 to 140 foot deep. The setbacks will have a 25 foot setback for the interior lots, front setback, and a 30 foot front setback for exterior lots. The side setbacks will be five feet. The exterior side along the right of way corner lots will be 10 feet and the rear lot will be, rear setback will be 20 feet. This is, uh, the intent of this development is to provide a unique, single family residential development with creative green space areas that produce, that provide opportunity for outdoor recreation. Um, the size and shape of the lots that they want to use does not exist in a standard residential zoning district. Thus is why they're asking for the PUD. The density is, as I said, 5.17 lots per acre. The smaller width.
How many per acre?
5.75 units per acre. The smaller lot with, I'm sorry?
Is standard four? What's the?
SF2 is four, four units. So it's just a little bit over in SF2, at, which is their four units per, uh, acre. The smaller lots will allow the developer to achieve the same density while also preserving more than 15% of the natural green space and creating a development which stands out in many respects from typical offerings. The five foot wide side setbacks will ensure eaves of the adjacent houses are separated by at least 10 feet to comply with fire code separation. And that five foot side setback is from the eve, not the wall of the, of the structure, okay? Uh, the rear setbacks will be 20 feet, which will, uh, allow for a usable backyard and provide room for any necessary utilities. They will all have an attached garage with a capacity for at least two cars. The covenants provide requirements for any accessory structures to be placed on the, on the lots. As I said, there will be no duplexes, triplexes, or multifamily units in this development. The covenant specified the exterior building materials. The first floor up to the second floor plate of each home will be 100% brickstone or manufactured stone with no siding. And there are some of the various, uh, types of structures that they will be putting in here. As you see, they all have garages, they all have brick on the, on the, up to the second floor. The developer intends to build and sell the homes as opposed to building and then renting homes or selling lots to individual or home builders. Um, they will have, uh, some amenities that go along with it. They have the neighborhood green.
Those we jumped, or I'm sorry, Patsy, we jumped ahead.
Yeah, I gotta, you can't go back with this, I gotta start again.
I'd like to see those elevations again if we could.
You get all the way to the end. Okay, start again. We could get to those. I went through them kinda quickly. Okay, let me show you the layout. This is a looped street. It has this green, uh, neighborhood green between them with, uh, a trail that goes through it that will be lighted with bollards, access from all the lots for that. And then these are the, the type of structures.
Is that what you call the plat?
Yes, that's the primary plat that is.
Why is the plat not, uh, included in what we received?
Well, I thought it was sent to you guys with all this stuff. Did you get the elevations and stuff and the PUD document and all?
We didn't get the plat, the layout or the, uh, elevations.
And Patsy, I'm not complaining to you, but if these people want us to approve PUDs, why are we not getting all the information?
Well, now, all the information is being provided to the planning commissions in their packets, which you get a copy of it. According to what I was told, the development plan, the covenants, and the surveys were all included in what was sent to the mayor's office to go in the, into the plan.
Is someone here, the, from the petitioner?
Yeah, they're, they're here.
Did the petitioner know that we didn't have the plat?
Well, again, I'm telling you, it was in the planning commission packet we sent stuff to. I don't go through the council packet when it's put together. I guess I probably need to start doing that. And making sure we get everything in.
I can't answer, Jeff, I don't know if we got it or not.
Yeah, I don't know either.
We, we thought we ironed that out a few weeks ago and, and it's been.
We, we have lots of stuff to send over and sometimes things get lost in the shuffle. But anyway, that's, that's what they look like. Uh, let me go through the rest of this and then we can finish up questions. The, there will be six foot privacy fences along the rear property line of lots 29 through 66, which are those lots in the middle. The developer will put, uh, bollards along there, typically spaced at about 90 feet of the trail that's in that green space between the lots. Will have lighting along it, along it, and there will be fences on the back of those yards. So if you're on the trail, you won't be able to see. Oh, there we go. You guys can move it backward, okay, there we go.
What's the connection with Bosch Coleman?
I'm sorry?
That Bosch Coleman, what does that mean?
Roush Coleman.
Roush Coleman is, is the proposed builder of the, of the structures. And those are the, the elevations or the models that they, they're looking to build in this.
Roush Coleman's the petitioner?
No, the, the petitioner is a property owner. I think the developer will be Roush Coleman is the way I understand this, yeah.
So you've got, you've got all, I'm sorry, Mike, you've got all the homes facing the road?
Correct.
Got the green space and the trail, that spine of a trail?
Correct. And there's green space on both sides and that trail will be lighted with bollards with lights, uh, every 90 feet so that the trail itself is lighted down through there.
Most recent PUDs that we've done out east, they had 35 foot lots, did they not?
Uh, we have, we did some, just recently had 35 foot lots, yes.
Most recent PUD we did was 35 foot lots.
Right, and these, these are 40. They, they will have a tot lot in the smaller green space with play equipment and seating. The larger green space will be utilized for soccer fields and walking trails with bollard style lighting, as I just said. The home builder will install one tree during lot, per lot during house construction. Installation of the tree is a requirement, pro duitions of a C of O. Developer will install trees and landscaping in common areas as shown on the landscape plans. And they will warranty the trees for one year. The primary streets along the front of the house will be supposed to be constructed with 46 feet of right of way and will be 21 feet wide, measured from back of curb to back of curb in the driveline and 29 feet wide where parking is located on one side of the street. And they are designating which sides of the street will have on-street parking. Uh, the entire project will be developed in one phase with two access points off Robinson. The current landowner will retain the ownership of the front lots for future development. The frontage streets will include sidewalks along both sides of the road. The developer will construct the sidewalk along the portions of the road through the green spaces, through the pedestrian courts, and out to, uh, Highway 412 or Robinson. Overnight parking is prohibited on streets within the development other than designated parking areas. All streets are proposed to be dedicated to the city's public streets within dedicated right of way. Monument signs will be at the entrances of the subdivisions. They will be constructed of stone or brick with cedar accents. And the monuments will be in common easements that are maintained by the POA. Um, they do have a set of covenants that come along with this and, and the covenants run with the, the land itself. It sets up a method for how membership and voting rights are established in this POA. The association will have one class of membership for purposes of voting. Owners shall be entitled to one vote for each lot owned by the owner. Notwithstanding the declaration, shall have four votes per lot on all matters until 99% of the lots have been conveyed. And then the owner will have one vote per lot that he still, that they still own. It establishes the procedure for how the board of directors are to be elected, how they operate their meetings, and it indicates that there will be no additions to the property or the subdivision unless approved by the POA in the city, which would take an amendment to the PUD itself. Uh, they have the ability to lean the lots for, uh, assessments that are part of the POA itself, which include a one-time initial assessment upon, uh, receiving a deed, uh, regular assessments for maintenance, taxes, and insurance, the ability to add special assessments for other improvements or acquisitions, and they have the ability to levy, uh, liens against the property if they're not paid. The annual assessment will be $160 per lot and the initial assessment will be $150. Uh, the special assessments are to be made by the, uh, group as they move forward with it. The duties and powers of the association are pretty much standard that you see in most covenants. They are providing a legal reserve fund for the benefit of the association at the very beginning with $2,500 in it. The members, it indicates the rights that the property owners have to use of common properties. And I'll go over all these details if you want me to, but it's pretty standard stuff. But I have those if you want, if you wanna see that. Um, it does indicate that if they want to add, do any additions to the, to the structures, they have to submit their plans to an architectural review committee that has to make a determination with that addition can be made and sets out the rules on how that architectural review committee is established. Uh, no, uh, fences can be built across surface drainage. They are required to have detached garages for a minimum of two automobiles. They shall be fully enclosed and contain a full-length overhead-style door. No garage shall be enclosed, modified, or otherwise used so as to reduce its capacity for parking vehicles. All garage doors are to be kept closed when entering or exiting the garage. Any detached structures such as a covered entertainment area, guest house, pool house, storage building, or other structures shall conform to the basic styling and materials of the residential dwelling. Uh, and they have to have approval of the committee before they can be built. No temporary, uh, structures, trailers, mobile homes, tents, construction shacks, or other buildings are allowed on any of the lots. Uh, fences are required if, uh, fences shall be constructed on any lot in the area between the front building line and the front shall, and the front lot line. The fence is supposed to be a six-foot fence with the boards built to the inside. No chain link fences, no wire, hogwire, or other similar materials can be permitted. Fencing will be required along the rear property line of lots 27 through 66. They'll have standard mailboxes approved by the U.S. Postal Service. Uh, there will be no signs allowed in the subdivision itself except for sale of property, resale, rent, or signs used for builders or agents. Uh, vehicles cannot be parked in the front yard, cannot be parked on the driveway, and no inoperative vehicle shall be permitted to remain for a period in excess of one day. There are exceptions for holidays of parking in driveways and on streets for holidays that's in there. The lots are required to be well-maintained and sanitary. All open areas in the lots will be kept mowed to a height of not more than six inches. If the owner fails to maintain, the association can have it done and put liens on the property for maintenance of that. No RVs, boats, trucks, trailers, uh, are allowed in the subdivision unless they fit entirely into a private garage. Can't store construction materials onsite, uh, only for 30 days prior to the commencement of the construction. No dumping, and they will have four model homes in the subdivision, um, and will be, uh, sold as they sell up the lots. And I think that's it, unless you have some questions about some of the details.
Please the ordinance be adopted.
One question real quick. The pond, is that pond being filled in and built on and is that in any of our drainage map or anything like that?
No, it's, it's approved as a detention facility and, Jason, you want to talk about how it's, right. It's a dry pond. That will be maintained by the POA. It doesn't come to the city. The POA, that's part of the common property that the POA will maintain.
So there's not, it's not in those lots on this side?
No, it's this, this area right here.
You're talking about the existing pond?
Yeah.
Oh.
So it'll be mowed out and then filled in with appropriate material?
But it's pretty much in the same location.
It's, it's generally in that area, but I've mainly-
But it's not in any of our other drainage map for other subdivisions, right?
Well, it was in a previous subdivision that never moved forward on this one, and I don't think it ever turned over to the city because that, was that final plat ever filed?
I'm not sure. I know there's a pond to the south.
Yeah.
That's associated with the other development, I'm sorry, to the, to the west.
Yeah.
South of the page here, but-
Which is down, down here on the-
It's adjacent to our pond.
Right. But it's in the other subdivision, and it is one that we do have. I think the city does maintain that one.
Actually, this handout that we have says it's updated for item 11C. Is there anything specifically different here than what was given to us in our packet?
The difference is to add the spacing of the bollards because that wasn't indicated in the original. That was one of the things they had to change, and to extend the sidewalks all the, all the way out to 412. That's the only two major things that had to change. The rest of it were some typos and things like that that had to be corrected.
It did say here, parking on the streets, 40-foot wide rightways will be, and will be 21 feet measured back curb by curb in the driveline and 29 feet wide where parking is located on, on side of the street. Where is that located?
And they have, it's all the outside of the streets, all the way on, on the north side or on the east side, on the outside edges. It's the darker-
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, on the exterior of the Loop Street. That's where the, on-street parking is allowed.
And so the owner of this land is Brenda Lazenby?
Correct. Current property owner is Brenda Lazenby, yes. And that, the record property owner has to be the applicant.
Yeah. We do have a motion to approve?
Do we do have a second? No second?
Randall, just a second.
Second.
Okay, Randall's second. Okay, any other questions or comments?
I've got a question for Ron Finley. In any PUD such as this, what's the bigger concerns on enforcement? Just code enforcement?
I don't think I'm understanding your question.
For PUDs of this, of this type, what does your department have to deal with the most?
Now, the, the POA's going to address any, you know, most of the issues in there now. We, I mean, we do normal, you know, junk and trash, you know, and we will address the tall grass and stuff like that, so I mean-
Basically, we'll address our city ordinances.
That's, that's correct.
And it'll be up to the, the POA to, to enforce the other covenants or requirements.
That's right.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Fuggerus.
Did you hear us, Mark?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
No.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Move emergency clause be adopted.
Right.
Al?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
No.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fuggerus?
Mark, did you hear us? Emergency clause?
Yes, yes, sorry. It keeps going unmuted.
You're out there where the buffalo roam.
Yes.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause carry 7-1.
The next item is a request to rezone seven acres located at 1297 Cooper Lane. The request is to rezone the property from Agricultural District A1 to High Density Multifamily Residential District MF24. Planning Commission recommends approval of this resoning request. The title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springville, Arkansas, the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from Agricultural District A1 to High Density Multifamily Residential District MF24 and declaring an emergency."
Is this apartments?
It's multifamily, high-density multifamily. We don't have a, a large-scale development for it yet.
Is that going over the bike trail? Is that what I'm seeing right there?
Uh, it, it's on the other side of the, you know, it's down at the, the southwest corner of that property. This property actually goes on the other side of the-
Creek.
No, it doesn't go on the other side of the creek. Property across the street crosses it, so you can see where it is right there.
Looks like, yeah.
Part of it, yeah, it does cross right here, so.
Crosses the tree.
Yeah, it crosses right here. This is the one we're doing here, the one next door.
So that, that little triangle that dips down around the trail is, obviously they can't, they won't be disturbing that. They won't really-
And they've, they've got to deal with the floodplain and all this entire piece of property too, so.
So what was the answer to the mayor's question?
Randall's question was it multifamily. It is-
Now, mayor's question is, does this rezoning affect the trail?
No, it doesn't. We have the easement already across the piece of property that will transfer with the property when it's, when it's sold. We have, all of those easements have been filed and recorded for all these properties down through here. We wouldn't have started construction if we didn't have those.
So they want to build on each side of the trail?
I don't know that they'll want to build on both sides of the trail. I doubt it. I can't answer that because we don't have a, we don't have a large-scale development plan for it yet.
I don't see how they could.
I thought we've dealt with property here at this location before.
They don't have a large scale on this already, do they?
No, we don't have a large scale on this. They don't have to submit a large scale with a rezoning request. You can rezone it. It's the highest and best use of this property for multifamily development.
Is there some apartments going in out in that area already?
There's some on the north side of the street.
Across the street, they're not in the picture, but they're across the street.
There's some of them that have, there's another picture we go on down here. So you can see these on the, in this, north is to the bottom. Those, those apartments are already built and occupied. There's a second phase that's being worked on now that's right to the west of that, and there's another phase after that, so.
Okay.
And this is the, our 2129 is the one we're looking at right now, and the very next rezoning request on the agenda is for the property right adjacent to it, and they're asking for the same rezoning.
What businesses are, are right there on?
Uh, the smeding center's at the corner, yeah, where UAMS is now, and across the street is storage units. And then the property-
Well, obviously couldn't build a fire station on, have storage units on it.
Right.
With good drainage.
Right. Well, what's your pleasure, counsel? This was unanimous approval?
Yes.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Denise?
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Move emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Move emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause carry 8-0.
The next item is for 11.57 acres located at 2,200, 2,300 and 2,400 South Almazurie Road. The request is to rezone the property from General Commercial District C2 to Light Industrial District I1. It was I1 previously. The owner decided to change it to C2 for some businesses to move in and has decided to, those businesses aren't there anymore and coming back to an industrial zone. Planning Commission recommends approval of the rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springville, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from Thoroughfare Commercial District C5 to Light Industrial District I1 and declaring an emergency."
Please the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and second to adopt the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause carry 8-0.
The next one is a 4.88 acre tract located on the west side of South 64th Street, south of Watkins Avenue. The request is to rezone the property from A1 to C2. The planning commission recommends approval of this. Title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springville, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from Agricultural District C5 to Light Industrial District I1 and declaring an emergency."
Please the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause carry 8-0.
The next item is a 6.3 acre tract located at 3824 Gene George Boulevard. The request is to reown the property from A1 to C2. Planning Commission recommends approval of this. Title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springville, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from Agricultural District A1 to General Commercial District C2 and declaring an emergency."
Move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? Anyone in the audience? Okay, Denise?
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerus?
Yes, ma'am.
The planning commission recommends approval of this rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads, an ordinance submitting ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto, by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A-1 to general commercial district C-2 and declaring an emergency.
What are all the zonings around it? I know that's by the community college.
Yeah. The property to the north of it's zone C-5, the property to the, to the east is zone C-2, the community college is zone P-1, and so is the ballpark, so.
Any comments at the planning commission list from citizens?
There was one property owner that wasn't sure he was notified, but we did determine that it was sent to his office, and I don't know what happened when it got to his office, but he, we do have the registration that it was sent to him, so.
Does this have to abide by the standards in the overlay district?
Yes, this is in the overlay district. Any development will have to meet the overlay district standards, yes.
Move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anybody?
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Flores?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Move emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Al?
Right.
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Flores?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry 8-0.
The next item is a 6.3 acre tract located at 3824 Gene George Boulevard. The request is to reown the property from A-1 to C-2. Planning Commission recommends approval of this. Title of the ordinance reads, an ordinance submitting ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto, by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A-1 to general commercial district C-2 and declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further comments or questions? Anyone in the audience? Kay Denise?
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Flores?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fuggerus?
Yes ma'am.
Al?
Yes.
Emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Fuggerus?
Yes ma'am.
Al?
Yes.
Williams?
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry 8-0.
The last item is a request for a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curb gutters, and sidewalks in connection with a large-scale development plan for Carson Engineering. They're asking to waive street improvements for Bain Street, which, as you see, is on the west side of the property. It's a street that has never been developed by the city. Planning Commission recommends approval with payment in lieu of improvements for the street improvements. And I think the property owners here want to address that. Okay?
Good evening. Uh, my name's Justin Walker. I'm, um, I'm in Carson Engineering. Most of you have probably never heard of Carson Engineering. Uh, we've been in Springdale since 2005. Most of you probably have heard of American tubing down at the end of Bain Street and also at the end of Ford Street. We're the company that makes the equipment for American tubing, so, uh, we've been in business in northwest Arkansas since 1978, so we've been around a while. We, uh, as you can see, we've got a building there and, um, we, we do quite a bit in there. We do, we're doing all of our engineering, all of our development, all of our manufacturing. Uh, we do basically everything, you know, so from a blank page design clear up through uh, finished product. Uh, one of the things that we desperately needed is engineering space, engineering development space, and so that explains our request to, uh, to, for the large-scale development and the additional 10,000 feet. One of the issues that we have specifically with the, uh, the request to curb and gutter and improve the street there is, of course, number one, we don't have any intention to access that street, so all of our large-scale, our large-scale development is built around access to, uh, Turbo and not Bain Street. So the other thing, of course, is, as you can see, the street, uh, doesn't go anywhere. It, uh, it deadends there on Dean's Trail, and, um, and of course, N T I occupies the space on the other side, but, um, there effectively will be no other development, uh, certainly not by Carson Engineering in that area, so it doesn't, of course, in our, our view, it doesn't really make sense to, uh, to spend the extra money. And of course, that's the last thing, is that, uh, we're talking significant expense. Uh, for us, we figured that it's going to be in, potentially in excess of six figures, which, of course, looking at our project from that specific viewpoint, that, uh, that's a significant part of our project. So, you know, to add six figures to that, you know, it potentially makes it to where we can't, uh, pursue the project. And of course, that means that we have to look at potentially other options, which, of course, we don't want to do. We like being in Springdale, so, um, so anyway, any questions?
Who, who does use the road?
I'm sorry, uh, no one uses the road. In fact, um, I think the city has, uh, stated it's a private drive.
Okay.
I'd like to move that the resolution, uh, passed with option one.
Okay, so that's the wa, the waiver.
Waiver of curbs and gutters.
I got you, okay. We got a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? No one in the room? Kay Denise?
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Flores?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Carries 8-0 with option one.
Is there no emergency clause on that?
It's a resolution.
It's a resolution, don't have to have one.
All right. Item 12, uh, Police and Fire Committee Chairman Brian Powell. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, last Monday, uh, we had this resolution come up in committee, and it was forwarded with recommendation for approval. And I'll read the title of the resolution is, "A Resolution Authorizing a Change in Staffing for the Fire Department." Uh, this will be, uh, for adding a fifth ambulance at Station 7. And Chief Irwin is here to provide more details.
Basically, this is a request to staff that fifth ambulance out at Harbor Drive. Obviously, all the studies we've done shows that's where it needs to go. I think the statistics showed that we had 108 times between January of 2020 and, um, just recently that we've had no ambulances available in the cities. Not to say we're not covering, because we are with mutual aid, but certainly, we're getting to the point where we need that ambulance, so.
Okay.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to adopt the resolution. Any further questions or comments?
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Flores?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Carries 8-0.
Committee Chair Powell, if I may?
May I?
And Mayor, if I could address the counsel? I would like to ask, on this next resolution, that that be tabled until our budget hearing. And, and there's a couple of reasons for that. The first thing I want to tell everybody is we still need those positions, um, and it's something that, um, we feel strongly that we need. However, we've had a couple of resignations since that actual time that we've requested this, and we're getting into something that I've come to this council on numerous occasions and ask you to please split up our hiring process, because we can't absorb that many new people. So the very reason that I'm asking for these battalion chiefs is the very reason I'm asking you to table this. We will actually have to hire too many people to absorb in one hiring, and we can't do that. So we, we are asking you to table it until the budget session for January.
Can we not just remove it? Do we have to table this?
And remove it and then bring it back at budget time, if that's what...
Whatever y'all prefer.
So do we need a motion to remove it?
You don't have to, but...
Just don't take any action?
Or if you want to make a motion to just bring it back at budget time, you can as well. Either way, however you want to do it. Take no action and it just...
We don't take any action, we don't have to take any action. Like Roberts rules of order said.
Okay. Chief, thank you. Appreciate it.
Sure.
All right. Chairman, is that everything for Police and Fire?
I believe that's everything from Police and Fire, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Uh, item 13 was Committee of the Whole. I think I took that. I can either take it now, or one of y'all can step up and take it.
Who wouldn't dare ask anybody to?
All right. We have an ord, item 13A, an ordinance releasing, vacating, and abandoning a portion of a dedicated public street pursuant to Arkansas Code annotated 14151042 in Hinson Heights, second subdivision to the city of Springdale, Washington County, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency, and the Committee of the Whole recommends approval.
Move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Ernest, did you have anything to add on this?
Not unless they have any questions.
Any other questions or comment? Okay, Denise?
Flores?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Flores?
Yes ma'am.
Both the ord, both the ordinance and emergency clause carry 8-0.
All right, thank you. Item B is a resolution authorizing the grant of a conservation easement on property owned by the city of Springdale, Arkansas pursuant to the Arkansas Conservation Easement Act, Arkansas Code annotated 15-20-401. Committee recommended approval. Uh, this is, uh, the property, uh, part of, part of the Rabbit Foot Lodge purchase, uh, property that, uh, that, this was a condition on the purchase of the property. Ernest also had, we're not approving, we're not asking you to approve the amount, the dollar amount tonight. This just approves the, um, uh, grant of the easement, and, but Ernest does have the figures also that we'll need to come back for, uh, for the cost. Uh, this is a one-time cost. I had, I had originally thought, in my early conversations, uh, about a conservation easement, I had thought it was going to be an annual cost, but it is not. It is a one-time cost, and Ernest can share that with you, he's got it before him, I'm sure.
Yep. Yeah, this is, it is a one-time, it is a one-time fee. There's no annual fee or maintenance, uh, fee associated with ongoing fee associated with the Northwest Arkansas Land Trust. Also, I know that, that, uh, there was a concern about, uh, being able to address, accumulated silt in the spring, being able to dredge that out. That is not going to be a problem. I've addressed that with them as well.
And how much are we going to be paying for this?
A total of $30,600. There was $5,000 was paid upfront, and it's $25,600 is the bond.
When do you expect that to come back to us?
Uh, probably as soon as it's...
The full, how much comes back to us? The full amount or the $5,000?
$25,600. We've already paid the $5,000.
No, we've, we've paid...
Okay, the $25,600 comes back to us?
No, no, no. We paid $25,600.
I think he meant that for the money, for the request to spend the money to come back to us.
Right. Right, I was, I was just asking Ernest when we would be coming back with the request to spend the money.
Just so we're, we're clear, the, the total amount that we're going to be on the hook for is for $30,600 one-time charge, not the...
Correct.
$30,000 that I understood would be hit every year for...
Oh, no.
Folks to tell us what we couldn't do with our land.
It was, uh, but we've already paid five down, so we'll be coming back with a request for...
For the remainder.
Remainder, yes.
And that comes out of the city attorney's fund?
Out of his lunch money. Anyone else with questions? Would entertain a motion then?
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Second, any further comments? Anyone? Kay Denise? Here's Mark.
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Flores?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Carries 8-0.
Thank you. And the last item for Committee of the Whole was, uh, is item C, "A Resolution Expressing the Willingness of the City of Springdale to Apply for a STBGPA Funding for Construction of Phase 1 of Gene George Boulevard from Don Tyson Parkway to New Hope Road." And the committee recommended approval. Brad's here. If you have any questions, that's, uh, basically, we're applying, I'll, I'll speak a little as Brad comes, just in case you have questions. But, uh, we're, uh, we're applying for additional, uh, grant money that may become available, either in 2022, or, uh, if, if any other current grant money cannot be obligated in time by any other cities, then, uh, we stand ready to take it, to apply to this project. Did I get that about right, Brad?
Yes, sir.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further comments or questions? Okay.
Al?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Flores?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Carries 8-0.
Long way out there. All right, I'll give the, item 14 to our city attorney.
This is a resolution setting a hearing date on a petition to abandon a portion of a drainage easement in the city of Springdale, Benton County, Arkansas. This is a request on lot, lot 73 Thornberry subdivision, phase 5. This would set the public hearing for July 13th, and then the city clerk would publish notice of the hearing back on that day.
Move the resolution be approved?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further comments or questions? Anyone? Okay.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Flores?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Carries 8-0.
All right, thank you, and we need to, uh, we need y'all to, to make a decision on the date of the next committee meeting.
I move for July 6th, Tuesday.
Tuesday, July 6th, there is a planning commission meeting that night.
I understand.
Mm-hmm. With a long agenda. Kobe, do we have anywhere else we could meet? Or does the planning commission have anywhere else they could meet?
This is council chambers, isn't it?
Yeah. They need, they need the, well, they need the technology more than we need it for a committee meeting, is what I... Yeah. Mike, would, would the possibility be to do it, go ahead and do it on the 5th, on that Monday night? Would that be an issue for anyone?
I'm going to be out of town.
Be here? Would you be here on the 6th?
I will not, I will not be here that whole week.
All right, so you would be out of either time.
The 5th, isn't it a holiday?
Yep.
It is officially a holiday, it's Monday.
Well, why don't we do it Wednesday?
Okay, that would be the...
I won't be here then.
You, oh, you got your...
Well, Mike made it, you made a motion for the...
6th.
So we can deal with that if we get a second. If not, then we can talk about another date.
Mayor, we, we should be able to, to use the multipurpose room upstairs like we previously had before COVID, so.
We should be able to use the multipurpose room? On the 6th?
Should be able to. I'll verify that.
Is that okay with everybody? Move upstairs for that one?
Yep, good.
Well, or we could use Denise's old space. She's got, she had a lot more room than the multipurpose room.
It was unused, but she had a lot of room.
You're not, if you don't have it tied up on the moving documents and everything. Okay, so that's right across the hall from the mayor's office.
That works.
Okay? Good deal. That's what we'll do then. We'll have, uh, the next committee meeting on the 6th. I don't have anything else. Uh, does the, uh, do we have any, uh, comments from council? How about department heads? City Attorney?
Yes, sir.
Correct. Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.